All right, good evening. 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the June 27th Trinity County Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission concerning matters within our jurisdiction, which are not listed on the agenda and you request that it may be agendized for our future meeting. No action may be taken on these matters at this meeting. If there are anyone who would care to address the commission. Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Dan DeBouty and I'm from Hayfork. I am addressing the commission tonight because the situation at the dump, the transfer station in Hayfork is dismal, to put lightly. There's constant vandalism from members of the community at the Hayfork Transfer Station. Locks are broken all the time. The trash is always picked through. I feel like we need to try to find a way to apply for a USDA Rural Development Grant to get some funds to improve the conditions of the transfer station in Hayfork. I've called Diane Rader at Solid Waste numerous times about this and I really feel like if we could mobilize some mechanisms internally in the county to improve the conditions of the dump in Hayfork, that it would impact the community in an extremely positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner, Justin Hawkins from Hayfork. I just wanted to real quickly touch on some of my thoughts I had after going to the draft EIR for cannabis meetings. And it was already obvious to me, but I listened to the comments from planning staff and the consultant assent, and it's clear if you read very far in the document that they are mixing and matching illegal cultivation impacts and legal cultivation impacts. And I think all of you have been in this process since the beginning. I recognize most of you. When we first started the cultivation process to get licenses in this county, it was to mitigate the impacts from illegal cultivation. The first thing you had to do to get into the county program was to get a water board enrollment, okay? The North Coast Water Board program was very restrictive and it imposed mitigation measures that by themselves are CEQA compliant, okay? If you comply with the order, you are within CEQA. You are compliant. And it is even more robust with the new state cannabis order. Many things that actually are required in that program, that you have to have that permit, are again noted in the EIR. In fact, almost, I would say over half of the mitigations in that document are already required through an LSA or the water board enrollment or a, you know, three acre conversion. They literally stacked the document and padded it. And when asked the other night in Hayfork, "Why?", it was so that they could ensure that county staff was aware of all the requirements. Now, I'll be honest, I think that this county now recently has the ability to regulate groundwater, but they're not in charge of surface water in this county. And yet, I mean, almost, they have mitigations, including forbearance for surface water diversion. And if you read the details, they're mixing and matching illegal cultivation and legal cultivation in there. Because you can't divert surface water if you're legally cultivating. It's got so many times where the two are mixed and matched, it's unbelievable. And I think the greatest example is that they want to use the priority watersheds, which are from the Cal Cannabis Reg Section 8216 that talk about impacted watersheds, which the South Fork of the Trinity and Hayfork Creek in particular are part of that watershed that's impacted. The impacts to those watersheds are not from legal cultivation, because if you are legally cultivating, you have to be enrolled in the water board order following their very restrictive uses, including forbearance of surface water, pesticide use. It's a discharge permit, okay? But it also includes the extraction of water, surface and ground, in the new water order order. It takes care of all the water situations we can come up with for the most part. They're using the impacted priority watersheds that are talked about and not defined by Fish and Wildlife in the water board. They've done one study, I read it, I read it twice now, in the upper Mito watershed, where they're trying to tease apart uses for illegal and illegal, legal and illegal cultivation by within watersheds. You can't do it because we don't know where all the waters are. They're trying to use that priority watershed, which has impacts to water and fish and wildlife, to mitigate air, noise and traffic impacts that are unmitigated according to the DIR. They're trying to mitigate for those unmitigatable impacts according to the DEIR, air, noise and traffic, with a program that's designed to mitigate against illegal cultivation and water and biological impacts. It doesn't make sense. So I hope that the commission takes some time to look at this and actually notice how often illegal and legal cultivation uses are mixed and matched. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Wright from Lewiston. Good to see you all and thank you for your continued dedication and hard work for our area. I want to address this evening a recent determination that was made by the Planning Department in writing to a prospective buyer of parcel located close to the Trinity County Fairgrounds, that the fairgrounds is to be included in the 1,000 set, what setback requirement that's part of our cannabis cultivation ordinance. So if we reference ordinance number 315A43, there is a section number five, limitation on location to cultivate cannabis. Now, it includes a point A, small i, within 1,000 feet of a youth oriented facility, a school, any church, or residential treatment facility as defined herein. So let's take a look at what the fairground, how the fairground fits into those definitions. Number one, is it a church? I don't think so. Number two, is it a residential treatment facility, meaning treatment of drug and alcohol dependency? I don't think so. Is it a school or an institution for learning for minors, whether public or private? It's not. Is the fairgrounds a youth oriented facility, which means, let's look at this a little bit closer, public park, school, authorized bus stop, or any establishment that advertises in a manner that identifies the establishment as catering to or providing services primarily intended for minors? Does the fairgrounds do that? Is it an establishment that does that? I don't think so. Or individual, the individuals who regularly patronize, congregate, or assemble at the establishment are predominantly minors. Now, the Trinity County Fairgrounds isn't really an establishment, it's an events center. And it would be patronized by people of all ages, mixed, I don't think we could say predominantly, predominantly the youth. It is really our interpretation that this interpretation of the Trinity County Fairgrounds as fitting into that definition is inaccurate and could potentially impede some very important economic development opportunity for Hayfork, which is desperately needed. If you take a look at the Trinity County Fairgrounds, in addition, includes areas like the dump. I mean, how far are we going to go if that is the interpretation that the Planning Department has come up with? It also does not address whether, let's just give it the fact that, okay, we'll accept that that is, does fit into that definition, which we don't agree with, but let's just say we do, then where does that setback, how is it measured? Is it measured from a building? What building? Is it measured to the cultivation area? Is it treated like you would treat a dwelling setback from a cultivation area? It probably, you should probably be consistent in your, in your definition of measurements. It has, it has been indicated that the Planning Department's interpretation may be property line to property line, which could potentially exclude a very large prospective site that's perfectly designed and zoned for cannabis use. I would take it one step further. Under that interpretation, if you're going to say that any spot on the fairgrounds, which would go to the property line, would be considered a youth oriented facility perhaps, because children might appear in the parking lot or congregate there somehow, then you really have to take it to the extent of setbacks have to be from roadways, because children go along on roadways, right? They're in cars traveling. So I would like this commission really to, prior to having this be an appeal, because a license has been denied by the Planning Director, we've been told that will happen at this particular location, is for you to agendize and rule on the interpretation of the fairgrounds as fitting into those definitions required under the 1,000 foot setback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, today and staff. John Brower from Junction City. The previous speakers touched on really important subjects and want to follow up a little bit. I think the greatest importance is this draft of the programmatic EIR for cannabis permitting program. And it's long, it's not exciting reading, but it's important. It's really important to our community and moving, continuing to move forward with all the hard work we've already got into this program. So I just want to encourage the Commissioners to take your time reading it and be prepared for these discussions, which are coming up soon. It seems that August could be, this could be coming before you. And the cannabis community that is moving forward with licensing has a lot of problems with this document. I won't go through them now, but I just want to encourage you to be well-read and well-versed in this document, because we hope to open it up and really turn it into what it can be. In regards to what Lisa just spoke of, the Planning Commission, at the last Planning Commission meeting, I believe directed staff to agendize a Planning Commission discussion of variances and setbacks in general. And this was in the context, if I remember right, might have been Commissioner Matthews that brought it up to staff, or I think directed staff, as you were acting as the chair, or sorry, Diane was acting as chair. But to, the commission has already made a decision regarding, offered a recommendation regarding cannabis setbacks on agriculturally zoned parcels. And the recommendation was to pull them way back to the normal agricultural setbacks on agricultural parcel. So in addition to staff agendizing that discussion for the commission, it seems likely could also include this discussion that Lisa just mentioned about the fairgrounds. These are important matters and we really need your help. Thank you.
Mr. Brower, just one quick follow-up. All those comments you have on the DEIR are being submitted and running, is that correct?
Yeah, I think.
That's how they get into the record for?
Yes, and there will likely be many, many pages of comments to that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close out the comments and move on to the next item, which is to review minutes of two prior meetings, April 25 and May 9. I think we were all at both meetings, so we can treat this as lying. Any comments on April 25? Okay, sir.
Let's see, page four, second large paragraph, fourth line, towards the end, talking about the modification of the conditional use permit, which at that point he would be drawing the conditional use permit. It should be withdrawing, I believe.
Where? Fourth line down, okay.
Fourth line to say about further.
Okay.
I don't think drawing makes any sense better than how you draw a conditional use permit. And then on the next page, end of the second paragraph, it says, "But he would like to eventable." And I think it's supposed to be inaudible.
Okay.
I wanted to inject a little humor.
Very good. All right, chuckle, does it? Anything else?
Those are my comments.
Did, did you catch those? Okay. Anybody else on May 25th? I think it's April 25th. I have one on page nine, second line from the bottom of the page, said that the decision by the director, this would fundamentally be a minor change. Oh, yes, that word except should be axet. That's what that was showing. Anything else on April 25? Okay, how about May 9? Any Commissioners, I have a couple. I have a chuckle for you. Page three, the first complete paragraph, right in the middle of it, the word principal should be the word principle. Right here in this paragraph, which is the first full paragraph. Okay, and then on the first sentence of the ultimate paragraph on that page, Chairman Hughes says he thinks what she's addressing is why there's a prohibition on water, and I think that should have been a prohibition on water hauling. I don't think we have a prohibition on water, at least not yet. Anything else, Commissioner? Do you think motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended for April 25, 2019, and amended for May 9, 2019.
Motion and second. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there being no old business, we'll move on to new business. Item number four, which is a proposed mitigated NIGDEC and cannabis conditional use permit. Proposed, said declaration of permits are for cannabis manufacturing, nursery and distribution located in 3,001 Morgan Hill Road in Hayfork, APM 017-430-49, Applicants as a Valley of Plenty LLC, DeBouty.
Good evening, Commissioners. Is this on?
It is. Before you get into this too far, part of what this item is going to request us to do is approve an IS. And the staff report specifically says that the IS is in the staff report.
It does say that.
And I have not seen the IS.
When our administrative coordinator forwarded the agenda to you, there was supposed to be a link to the document. I think a link to the document was on the, then, when you received your agendas from Ruth, there was supposed to be a link in that directly to the document. It's on the Planning Department's website. All initial studies and secret documents are on the Planning Department's website. So it's not, not there?
Commissioners, did you note that link and did you read the IS? I don't think we approved an item where we don't have the IS.
So there was no notice that?
The problem is that even if the notice is there, that not all of us open up and would make note of the fact that, okay, it's here, the document's going to be coming, I'll look at the agenda, if there's something that strikes me, I'll look at that particular item, but I'm not looking for links.
Okay, one of the, one of the problems with, this is the IS.
Right.
And that was the reason, now would you still want a hard copy of this?
Of course.
No. Or a PDF? You're saying, what you're saying is you'd want a PDF. In what form would you like it?
Well, it's not just me.
Well, all of you. In what form would you like it?
My preference would be the hard copy, so I could study it, mark it up, deal with it, but I would go with what the general consensus of the commission is.
I could deal with it as a PDF, but it would be awfully long as a PDF, I'm not sure.
And it was too big.
And could get.
Yeah, and it was too big for us to send as a PDF. That's why the link was.
Yeah, and I understand that, now that I know I can be looking for it, but, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what the value would be. Well, obviously there would be a value, could mark it up, you could really look at it, but, but that's an awful lot for somebody to have to copy five times, together, and then send us. And this is very unfortunate.
We will provide it whatever format you want, we just need to know.
Other opinions? Would you like a hard copy or a PDF or?
I don't, I do enjoy things hard copied because I can mark them up and whatnot, but I mean, judging by the size of that, perhaps one solution would be to specify, to clarify, if something is attached or there is a link to make sure that is.
Some way to feel the letter, so.
Yes, like bold letters, attached as a link, please visit this, or if you would like a hard copy, let us know. Just some kind of mechanism for us to be 100% aware that the item or the documents there are accessible to us sometimes.
This is not something that has happened to the document for, but I'm not sure it's happened in the document for.
It happened at our last meeting.
Right, but that was, that was the first time.
That was the first time.
No, and that was my purpose, they are wanting you to have a link to it. Yeah, so if the link doesn't work, that's fine, we can give you a hard copy. If the document is small enough, we can PDF it, in this case, we could not PDF it.
My inclination is continue it. None of the, none of the Commissioners studied the document. I heard that correctly. Okay, so none of us has seen the document.
Okay, so for future reference, just, I understand that, for future reference, all the secret documents that appear before you will be on the Planning Department's website. They always happen, they always, that's just the standard operating procedure. And I did mention that at the last meeting, that I'll.
Remember you mentioning that? I actually do remember you saying that, but somehow it did not, it did, it did not seem to me that I needed to be looking for a link.
So Commissioners, it seems like the program things continues until we can decide. Unless it's a clear idea.
I guess we can discuss that. I mean, this happened last, at our last meeting.
And what did you do last week?
We still, we still took action, because basically, we came to the conclusion that the summarization of the document within the staff report highlighted all of the things that needed to be mitigated. All, all of the impacts were, I mean, it obviously didn't include the entire document, but it was the highlights of the time, so we felt there was enough information there to proceed.
I personally would prefer to, to continue on with, not to continue this, this item, but to proceed with the discussion of this item.
I'd like that as a motion. I'd like the commission to vote that that is the way we're going to operate.
Should we pass for certification for council?
Won't hurt.
See if there's anything that we, if we broke the rules last month, we should know that.
Or my other thing.
Throw mine to the question.
I do think it is a threshold issue to taking action on this item. You have a summary of it, certainly in the staff report. I can't tell you how that comport with the actual document or not, because I haven't seen the document itself. I don't think there's any harm in hearing it, but taking action on it, I think would, best practice would be to have the document at least, take a look at it, not necessarily have it studied to a very well, but you still have the document.
So, is there a change here? Or done? I find it very awkward to, I agree, it's very awkward to take action. Approving a secret document recommended to the board, they accept it, hopefully they'll read it. And if we have a, with all due respect to the staff, I'm sure it's a good summary.
So would your, council just suggest that since people have traveled here for this hearing, then we conduct the hearing? Is there an option that you see as chair that we could?
I believe we can have the hearing, since it was noted as a hearing, when we reach the end, we have to think long and hard about taking action on it.
Are there actions? There are a number of different actions.
There's a number of elements in the parent, looking for a single motion that proves authenticity, because it's three different conditions for a rezon, and a secret document. Okay, why don't we continue with the public hearing? See how much trouble we can get tonight and how that ends up. Folks are here to talk about it, let's just talk about it. Why don't you proceed with your testimony?
Okay. So the applicant is here this evening, as is his consultant, so he may be able to answer any more in-depth questions that you have regarding the staff reports that I don't address. So this project is a rezon of an ag parcel. It's a 30 acre parcel, it's zoned ag 10 acre minimum, and he would like to rezon to SUD. The reason for that, it will still have an ag function, but he would like to not almost fully vertically integrate several different cannabis activities. He would like to have a nursery in the future, if code changes, he would like to accommodate a larger cultivation site than what he currently has. He would like a distribution facility and manufacturing. And the main reason for the rezon is because he would like to do type seven or volatile manufacturing. On ag right now, yes, you can do non-volatile manufacturing, but he is proposing to do volatile manufacturing. And he's proposing to do that in a couple of steel buildings. Those are on the site map. There was a kind of difficult to read project map, site map, in the staff report, so I did print some more, they're larger scale, if you would like to look at those, they do show you a little more clearly where the floodplain is on the property. There's quite a bit of the property is in the floodplain. The manufacturing that he's proposing is outside of the floodplain, confirmed by an elevation certificate that he had done back in 2016. An initial study of mitigated NIGDEC were prepared for the project, which can be found, that can be found online for anybody's reference. We received one letter from Fish and Wildlife through the clearinghouse, and they had several comments, there were basically four different comments that they made that are addressed in the staff report. So if you have additional questions about those, please let us know. The property has a pretty extensive history of permitted buildings, what you see on the site map, all of the structures on the site maps, with the exception of one that's currently in process, have been permitted. And I didn't count them out, but it looks like there's probably 15 building permits that are on the property. Access to the property is via Morgan Hill Road, adjacent land uses to the north and to the south are ag. To the west, there is the old mill site, it is industrial. So his proposal to change to an SUD is, like I said, really geared at trying to accommodate a full cannabis facility with a number of different uses. Do you have any questions?
I would just like to mention the fact that I have visited the site actually twice. And one thing that I think it would be important to note is that even though it appears that the entire, on some of the maps, that the entire site is on the floodplain, that the project area is, what is it, about almost 16 feet above the floodplain, five, 15 points something above the floodplain. And so flooding would not be an issue. And I was. And so flooding would not be an issue, and I was able to see that by visiting the site.
Other thoughts or questions for Sam? I hear a question about the...you mentioned the accommodating additional activities if the code changes. So to tease out what is actually going to be done if the code doesn't change, you know, is where we're starting? It's...there's a 10,000 square foot cultivation area today, okay? The initial use permits are for manufacturing, distribution, and not the nursery or the nursery as well. Does the nursery fit within the...can it be on the property along with cultivation under current ordinance?
Well, there are separate...currently, his 10,000 square feet of canopy for his normal cultivation will remain where it is, and then he's adding immersions to that.
Okay. And are those two different premises, or...
Yes, it has to be.
Okay, and so all the discussion about the larger cultivation area and lots more greenhouses moving in, it depends on code changes, those are future?
Correct.
Peaking, the future plans?
Correct. But since he was doing the evaluation and he knows he wants to do that, he didn't want a future piecemealing situation, even though he can't do it now, it was included in the evaluation.
Great. All right, thank you. Any other questions? If this is a public hearing, then first I'd like to hear from the...I would like to offer the applicant an opportunity to speak first if you'd like, and then we'll have a little comment after three minutes are also...
My name is Daniel Devudian, I'm the principal manager of Value Plenty. I'm here before you guys to have this scope of work approved. It's been a real interesting experience working with county staff from all the different departments, whether it's planning, building, environmental health, code enforcement, the cannabis department. I mean, I'm pretty sure everybody's toe has been dipped in the development of this project to date, and it's...I just really appreciate the patience that I've been shown by certain staff members in county and the guidance that I've been given by my consultant to be here before you guys tonight. We're really looking forward to be able to have this opportunity to provide some capable employment to community members and an opportunity for 200 something licensed farmers in this county to have access to the greater market in California and services right now that they need to contract out to businesses in tumble and Sonoma County, as those are the two closest manufacturers, as reflected in the draft DIRR that was even prepared by Ascent, I think is the consultant's name, is preparing the county DIRR. It would be nice to have a homegrown, excuse the pun, manufacturer here in Trinity County. And again, I just look forward to the opportunity and appreciate all of the...everything today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone care to...
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Charlie Simpson. I am the owner and principal of Base Camp Environmental, located in Lodi, California. And we were retained by Mr. Devudian to assist with the sequel process, to prepare this formidable document, and to work with Leslie and her staff to be sure that it got the proper review and circulation through the state clearinghouse. So I wanted to just take a minute to review with you what we found in that document. Since there's some uncertainty, you don't have it in front of you, we have...and by the way, I've been doing this for something like 43 years, same thing, so, you know, maybe that's to my discredit, I'm not sure, but these are not exciting documents. But anyway, we've run through a series of about 20 different analyses in an initial study and examined the project in light of each one to determine whether there's a significant environmental effect or not. If there is, we're obligated to identify mitigation measures that will reduce those effects to less than significant, if they can, and if they cannot, then it's time to do an environmental impact report. So in this case, the majority, and the vast majority of the impact categories that we evaluated were found to be less than significant. And when you get your copy of the initial study, you can, if you like, confine yourselves to chapters one and two, where you'll find a summary of all the impacts and a detailed project description that really goes into quite an extensive discussion about what Mr. Devudian's proposing out there. So, starting from scratch and keeping it short, there were no aesthetic impacts of the project. The site is well screened from the highway, from Highway 3 across the river, it's quite a distance from the highway, and all the activities that are on the site will be screened from adjoining uses. There is no existing agricultural activity, although it's zoned for it, so the project wouldn't displace any agriculture. The project would have really minor air quality emissions, all below, well below the thresholds of the North Coast Air Quality Management District. And there is one potential issue related to odors, which is mitigated internally by a piece of the project, which would be an odor mitigation system that would be installed on the manufacturing equipment, and would be effective in reducing that potential effect to less than significant. So prior to our involvement in the project, there was a company called Natural Investigations hired to do biological and cultural resource studies of the site. They found no threatened or endangered species out there, wetlands, riparian areas, or anything else that would be impacted by the project. They also surveyed the area for archaeological resources and found nothing. So we do have mitigation in the initial study for what we call inadvertent discovery, because things can be buried and not be seen by a surface survey, and that would be one of the mitigations that we'd apply to the project, as summarized in your staff report. So going on down the line, we...these days, we analyze potential effects on geology and soils, on greenhouse gas emissions, and on potential hazards. And other than the materials that Mr. Devudian would be using in this process, which are all regulated and would have to be disclosed in his hazardous materials business plan to your local agency, there is no hazard related to the project, and there is no existing contamination on the site. The hydrologic effects of the project are minor. There's no improvement on any streams. The project would be served with an existing well that has been tested at something like 100 gallons per minute. Just want to be sure I got the units right. And we have also submitted a technical report from a geo hydrologist registered by the state who has examined the potential impacts of that well use at the rates, at the maximum rates that a project would consume, and their estimation is that the effects on surface flows in Hayfort Creek, if the two are connected, which cannot be determined, but they could be connected, would be much less than significant, very likely. So there are no major noise impacts, there are no population and housing effects. Project's been coordinated with the public service agencies, and they're all happy with it. And the traffic generated by the project would be incidental and of no effect on the surrounding roads that serve the site. And that really is the major points hit on in the initial study, and, you know, if these documents are boring, they're probably even more boring to hear somebody talk about, so I'll just say, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer those, and if not, I'll sit down. But thank you for the opportunity.
If I may?
Please.
The traffic generated, that would be not people coming...very rarely would it be somebody coming into the facility. It would be employees of the company going in and out and talking to the general public. Is that correct?
That's correct, and the majority of that traffic would be employee traffic. There would be trips in and out for distribution activities. Those would be on the order of a few trips per week rather than numerous trips per day. So you may have 20 some odd employees coming and going during peak seasons, but other than that, that's the traffic right there, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Can I answer any other questions for you? Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel, I'm also a partner in the Hayfort project. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on what Daniel first talked about with the 200 other farming licenses here in Trinity County. Without this kind of project, these farmers can't get their product to retail. There has to be a distribution. Unless they have a direct access to a store, they have to go through a distributor. They have to be a date in order for them to get there. So there's only about 500 stores in California right now, but 1,500 coming out within the next year. So these farmers, in order for them to, you know, pay taxes, it gets up to revenue and gets up to market, they need a distribution hub in their local towns to help do that. So I just kind of wanted to just kind of touch base on the importance of having a project like this in Trinity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Ruth. I own 3060 Morgan Hill Road, which is a neighboring property to the proposed project. I'm just here tonight to show support for the manufacturing program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabe Cordillo, and I'm a farmer in Trinity County, I have a licensed facility in Hayfort, and I'm here in support of Dan, because we need a facility like that that is designed, just like we were saying, to get our product to the market. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, I'm Terry Mines, Junction City. I actually have serious concerns about this project. Right off the bat, as you can see in this letter, this gentleman couldn't handle a simple greenhouse, and we're going to put a type 7 license in his hands? There's a huge forest behind his property, right here. Type 7 is kind of blows up people. I think that that's for like on a mill site, on a commercial property. I don't think we need to change an agricultural property here today to make a bomb threat for Trinity County. I think that brings up the most irresponsible thing that you guys could ever do. I think that he's obviously in a floodplain. There's a lot of issues here, just him having even a nursery, having even the garden he has. I just heard his consultant say there's no agricultural activities going on here, but he's got a garden there, so I don't know what his consultant is talking about, unless growing cannabis isn't an agricultural activity, I think it is. So, last time I checked, there's actually agricultural activity on that property, and I think that it's zoned agricultural. I have concerns about the distribution because of the traffic and the dirt and all that excess dirt that would be going into a floodzone, which we know that would be kind of an issue because of that kind of situation. He's planning on moving the dirt, obviously, and facilities back into a floodzone area. 16 feet, the last time I checked, when Junction City burned down, nobody could rebuild because the floodzone's different, they came back in, that floodzone's actually not the same. So I'd actually like to Army Corps of Engineers to come in here, make sure that floodzone's the same, because we actually just had this happen in our county two years ago that it wasn't. So I think there's some serious concerns here. I mean, I'd be very, very skeptical about abhorrence of type 7 license that's not on the correctly zoned property in a situation where we're not going to burn down Trinity County.
Thank you, sir. How you doing, Ben? I'm going to be doing the extraction at this facility if we get it going, and I think there's...Colorado's had close to five years, maybe six years, of running legal extraction with type 7. And under the right circumstances and built correctly, done under the right circumstances, there's never been an issue like this man was just talking about. I've talked to a few, I've had a few interactions, done a few things in Las Vegas with a few legal labs, I've had a few conversations with industrial commercial hygienists. He has told me specifically that this is a little less dangerous than even painting cars. We have our solvents, our stay on liquid, vaporize them inside of a closed system, they stay completely contained. We're in a booth that sucks out all air, everything, everything is explosion proof, everything is UL listed, everything is completely built and designed for exactly what we're doing. The horror stories that are heard is a lot of the black market stuff that was done outside of those parameters and hasn't been done and built correctly like we can do, now that we can go through the process and have it done correctly. I think the danger, it's not okay to say it's not, but we are obviously doing anything and everything we can to make sure that it's not a danger to anybody, for the community, and a benefit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris Wire. My parents up here, love this area. Own a bit of land in the same district. I've heard and seen photos of the collapsed greenhouses. It was a failure to just maintain some simple temperature of the greenhouse structure by this company, Corporation LLC. They can't even maintain a greenhouse over the winter. Are we going to hand them the keys to explosive material in the county? I think if that were to, let's say, explode, create a fire or something, it could potentially make us look bad, the county would make other licenses would get shut down, the simple engineering thing on the greenhouse. Couple months ago, maybe three, moved in here, trying to shut down someone else's manufacturing distribution. I couldn't figure out why someone would be doing that, since I know he's a farmer as well. And now he's here high and mighty trying to save the community and bring in distribution and manufacturing. Well, was he not back then just trying to eliminate competition? And now, here he is, the sole savior, pretty staying here to save us all? No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner Justin Hawkins from Hayfort. This is a really interesting staff report and proposal for project, because I don't think we've ever seen, for cannabis at least, an SUD rezon. And, you know, I've looked up SUD rezones, and it looks to me like there's two types. There's kind of the more residential, maybe for, there's some for camps and stuff where they have a rezon for, it's commercial, but it's not industrially based. This to me seems like more of the industrially based rezon, kind of like what we have in Weaverville, down below the Performing Arts Center, right, in that area, industrially zoned. And I think that was the spirit of why, you know, originally, in our ordinance, we have type 7 manufacturing allowed in those SUDs, is for rezones that make sense for industrial purposes. This is located on Morgan Hill Road, which is across from the highway, down a dirt road. And it's paved, but it's down a road that is, it's not a major highway. And it, to me, I looked at the rezon, you've got an unclassified on one side with a resource designation, so I would expect that to get an ag forest or an ag zone designated, zoning that was not unclassified. The other ones are ag around it as well. There is one, I think it's the heavy industrial, which is basically, heavy manufacturing, which is basically industrial zone. It's the parcel to the west. They share the creek. I just, I don't see a clear reason why we need to have it rezoned to SUD, other than he wants to have all these license types. Seems unusual. Seems unusual. I'm just a little surprised. I hope it works. I hope you guys agree that it works, but to me, it was a little surprising. But I would like to mention one thing on the map. It's on page 26 of the document, property and premise diagram. I found it odd to notice that on the top, on the top's right-hand, top-left-hand corner of that map, they show the pond. And it has the 100-foot setback around that pond, if you guys can see that kind of line. I think that's a 100-foot setback from the pond you're required to have for surface water. But in the new state water board order, it's actually 150 feet from surface water, including ponds. Additionally, you're not allowed to have cultivation activities within those setbacks, whether it's 100 or 150 feet. You were allowed to have it 100 feet back in the original water board order. But they've got a greenhouse within 100 feet. You've got cultivation activities, including processing, within 100 feet of the pond. I'm not really sure how that's allowed into the water board orders. If I'm looking at this right, that 100-foot line goes all the way around and includes all those cannabis activities. I just, unless I'm misreading the map, that looks like he's got a bunch of activities within the self-preparing setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
But Blanco and Blanco. Another PC, and let's see if I can talk quietly. Good evening, commissioners, members of the commission. I'm not familiar with this property, and I don't actually know a lot about it. So I don't have a lot of comment on the project. I am familiar, however, as I think most of the commissioners, at least everyone who was here last time, for Nicholas Holliday did, who's gonna come back again in July for variance? And even though it was in the staff report that he needed it to complete his project, and he requested it in September, had to get re-continued because it wasn't properly noticed. I don't see the word rezone anywhere on the agenda. Sorry, I don't know how, I think that's a significant part of this project, is the rezone, and you all know that as well. So I don't know what we gotta do to like get consistency, but we do have to have it. Just so that we don't have Nicholas, you know, feeling frustrated that he's gonna come back. Something else doesn't get noticed, but we can go ahead and deal with it. So otherwise, I trust your judgment to figure out what to do with this. And we do this all that way, can we be?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Mike Cordillo. I work on a licensed farm in the Hayport area. I'm here to voice my support for the Hayport project. There's a lot of people in our area that could really benefit from this. And I personally have been to the facility. I've seen it, I've seen, been around the area. It's nowhere near the town. It's neighboring a mill site across the creek. I personally think that if there's, I can't think of a better location in the Hayport area than the proposed location. He's also one of the only people I'm aware of that had an environmental impact study done on his own property outside of the county. Again, I am in support of this project. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I don't know if you have rules.
We do. We have a rule about speaking twice.
Oh, yeah?
Okay. And you're breaking it.
Again, Charlie said some basic.
You can quick one minute because you're with the.
I've already used up all my time. So I just want to speak quickly to the SUD issue that one of the speakers brought up. And I particularly want to speak to that because I analyzed that in detail before we suggested it to the planning department and to Mr. DeBouty, and it has been, kind of been through the bill already. So my thoughts on that are that the SUD zone, there's nothing in the ordinance that points to specific areas where that should or, where it should or shouldn't apply. It might be applied in an industrial area or a commercial area or an ag area. But what it does seem to be is something that's set up to allow this commission the flexibility to evaluate sensible projects that need something a little different than is required by the strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And this is one of those things. Now, the scale of what's being proposed, this is not an industrial-scale project. There's one building, the majority of which would be for storage, and inside the building, a container-sized structure that would be used for the manufacturing process. The rest of it is generally, did I use something new?
Pretty much.
Okay, one more quick point. So anyway, the SUD, I think, is oriented toward economic development in general and meant to be applied broadly.
Thank you.
Can I just speak to one more point?
Okay. So again, this has to do with the SUD on the A-10 zoning that my parcel is currently. The type six manufacturing is allowed. One of the solvents that is allowed under that type six license is ethanol. Ethanol vapor is just as flammable, explosive, dangerous, you know, all of these, you know, fear factor words as butane or pentane or any of these other solvents, they all carry the same risk. However, there are certain and very specific industrial process equipment that's involved in these manufacturing processes, which are required by the state to be employed in these facilities. There, it's not like, you know, we're in the backyard with a bunch of cans of lighter fluid, making dope in a bathtub. Like, this is a serious industrial chemical process that is common among many other industries. It's not unique to cannabis in any way, shape, or form. Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. One thing that I found interesting in the staff report is here on page 11, discussing comment 1D, which was from Fish and Wildlife regarding biological resources. And the comment was that the, let's see, "Cannabis policy requires that prior to commencing any cannabis land development or psychic expansion activities, cultivators shall have a qualified biologist identify sensitive plants, wildlife species, or communities as proposed developed the site. CECL requires that information developed in negative declarations be incorporated in database." Blah, 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 blah. "Accordingly, please report any special status species or natural communities detected during project surveys to the California Natural Diversity Database." And then the response is that the applicant's consultant did not find the presence of any special status species and natural communities during any surveys conducted on the site. Therefore, no reporting was required. We don't see a copy of the biological assessment in the staff report. I don't know if.
So the 200-day document right there, all of that.
Okay. Okay. But that's just an important point. Thank you. So if there were any detected or any mitigating measures.
Hard on natural diversity.
It would be nice if they made it into the condition.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Only once. I have a close public comment. Commissioner, did you have a comment?
Okay, now I just was, we've only in fact that cannabis.
If we'd only seen the initial study. Understood. All right, commissioners, your thoughts on this item?
Well, I'm wondering if we are going to be continuing it because we have not seen the initial study. Do we want to go on with our comments or do we want to? I mean, it seems to me that we're at a decision point right now if we're going to continue it. And I don't know, I want to make comments based, if we're going to be continuing it, I'd rather wait to make comments.
Okay.
In a proper continuum. But what's the pleasure of commission? Do you want to try and move the motion on this, or would you like to continue and do the homework?
Before we go even that far, I'd like to ask counsel to answer Mr. Blanco's statement about the zoning notice.
The rezon's not agendized, the CUP's, and the mitigated negative agendize.
So we wouldn't be rezoning to SUD?
That's correct, not tonight.
So we would have to continue it any case.
Any options of which we can't issue one of those. But any. The type seven would require the rezon, so we can't issue that CUP. So it looks like we should continue this item. We will be back anyway. I will make a motion that we continue this item to the next available meeting so it can be properly agendized and we can see the environmental documents.
And notice.
And notice.
I'll second.
Motion to continue and second, any discussion, commissioners? Fall in favor, please say aye.
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 Any close? Since you have to re-notice anyway, there's not, it's not necessarily set to date right now. That would avoid re-noticing, but you have to re-notice. Okay. And then it goes on to agenda item number five. This is a proposed amendment to zoning ordinance number 315, also known as Title 17, from moratorium on newest grading in Trinity County, located in West County, widely under the Kansas Casers Trinity County Plan.
Good evening, commissioners. They record that VOT, will be back.
It seems.
You do.
I do want to point out one quick correction right off the bat, fortunately, that it is not a moratorium. Word was scrapped. It is a restriction on mass grading, the ordinance number 1347. So of course, you have seen this item before. It's gone to the board, it's approved on April 7th. Had a second reading.
Thank you, sir. Let me get it. Is there violence out there?
It sounded.
I don't know that there's violence of the physical kind. I think it sounded just like.
All right, thank you. Continue, Dave.
No, it's a good question. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Keep your, keep your eye on the door. It went to the board, had its second reading, and became effective on May 17th. But conditional upon your approval was that I bring this item back to the planning commission for four specific changes. So the ordinance was approved, but they requested a recommendation from the planning commission on what you see in background, A, agricultural grading exemption. We want clarification on that language. They wanted a modification of the timeline for response by the county after receipt of an application. They wanted removal of some specific language in section five and to clarify emergency work section. Staff has also included some other changes that they felt were necessary. And I think I have to point out at this point, any spelling mistake in the staff report is definitely my fault. So keep that in mind, please. So at your pleasure, I'd be happy to talk about each of those items that the board requested to be changed or piecing in, whichever you would like to do.
This is a preference. I'd suggest you just go through.
Absolutely. So the first item on section 1.4 agricultural grading, a particular commissioner asked that that be clarified. There was some discussion about.
A particular board member?
Yes, correct. Some clarification about the idea if you're, say, disking a hayfield, over time, that can actually change the topography of the ground. Where the condition here was that you should not be grading more or less than too deep, deeper or above the natural contour of the ground. So, and the different types of equipment, excuse me, that could be used during a typical agricultural activity, grading, disking, load board clouds. I added some language here just to describe what I meant by grading on agricultural land. So you can see the section here, the changes are underlined in italics. Any reductions or anything I was taking out is stripped through. So my intent again is to satisfy that board member's concern about the specific restrictions on agricultural land and what is and is not exempt. So everything you're reading there would be considered exempt. That is on page two.
Yeah, I think the original language is 1, 4. Applicated in a grading budget, symptom is grading ordinance, agricultural grading. That does, I see that for a downgrade of 1, 2, or that. Yeah, but that, that, the end of A and the start of B is a that, that.
Thank you. That would be my.
Substantially change the natural contour. It says the same thing with the next one, it includes the.
At least I'm consistent.
Any thoughts on this item? I guess you're going to the staff report. In the small audience, maybe we just will interact with you as you go.
I'm okay with that.
Any thoughts on clarifying that exemption?
It made sense to me when I read it.
Okay.
So the second item, halfway down page two, time limits on the ordinance, that is related to another specific request by a board member. I tried to add some reason for and against in those two paragraphs at the top of that section. And then following that is the actual language modification. So going through, simply put, 30 days was the original language that you saw, that if the county were to receive an application, that we would respond within 30 days of the approval or denial of the application. If we did not, then the application would be deemed complete and the permit would be issued. Again, that's meant to keep things moving, of course. The request was to change that to 21 days, specifically because of the nature of contractor work, needing to generate income, generate projects almost on the fly, is one way to put it. During the summer months during the construction season, you need to mobilize and demobilize in a fairly complicated logistical dance oftentimes. And so the request was that make sure that the county permit processing, that the process would not slow them down. They didn't want equipment hanging out in the field waiting for the county to provide. I very much understand that. I've worked with a number of contractors and been in that situation where timelines are very tight and logistics are very difficult. On the other side, for the county, though, the intent is that 30 days is a sufficient amount of time for us to be able to get to a permit for approval. Our workloads don't require that, but it definitely would make things easier for us in terms of processing. And part of the intent of the original drafting of this ordinance was that the director's use permit was requesting the same information that a contractor or a sign order would need anyway to apply for other permits, such as fish and wildlife, the water board, or any of those types of details in terms of project description, maps, and material volumes, all of that. So the idea was this was a similar process. They should already have those materials. They should have already planned ahead. They should maybe plan in the winter months and then have things ready to go for the summer months, regardless of their specific schedule of implementation. That was the intent, but there can be good arguments on both sides. 21 days. Twenty-one day progress. So even on the tape, sorry, on page three, that is where you'll see those changes.
Okay, so this reduces for thirty days, twenty-one days, the time within which county responds to the.
Correct.
And you're proposing the county's okay with this?
This was a condition of approval by the board. So I, they wanted a recommendation from the planning commissioners, so.
Does the county have a recommendation? Does the staff ever?
Staff would like it to remain thirty.
I would like it to remain thirty. I'm not sure if you would like to speak to it, but I believe the intent of putting together your permits before you do the work is valid. And understanding that changes the shift of the flow of work for any particular contractor to change that mode of work that has been existing in this county for a long time, that work is done on the fly or there isn't sufficient planning or documentation to show what is being done, which is the intent of this ordinance. I would recommend thirty day, but I do not want to contradict the board member.
Well, I'm checking commissioners.
This is calendar days, correct?
Correct.
Calendar days.
I personally think thirty days is, is reasonable. I suppose we could say twenty-one working days would give a little more time. But, but I think just because the county traditionally has not done a lot of pre-planning and getting things organized ahead of time, doesn't mean that they shouldn't start doing this.
It's a big change.
Yeah.
To change the culture of equipment operators. Sure, you'll think.
I, and I recognize that. I'm just proceeding my thoughts. And I understand that they want to get jobs done so they can move on to their next job, but.
Well, you have to remember, we haven't had a grading ordinance, so.
Exactly.
Very few plans have been drawn.
Exactly.
Or engineered or any of that stuff, or any road.
No, exactly.
Building pad or whatever. And so this is, this is a large change.
Yeah, no, I recognize that. But if we're going, if it's going to end up that they're going, that the planning department is going to need thirty days, we should do that at the beginning and not have, not have delays based on the fact that they can't get the approvals out.
I mean, the key here is whether or not they get a complete package application with sufficient information at the beginning. Relatively easy to review an application, say, there's not enough information here. Basically saying, provide this, this, and this, and this. So that, that would be relatively easy to do with twenty-one days. Get out to the site and familiarize yourself enough with the plans when you've got, I don't know, dozens of these maybe. I mean, what kind of workload do you anticipate?
I'm happy to give an overview of what I've seen so far. Still could have been a place to start.
We've been in operation here for two weeks, uh, a month.
Since May, May seventeenth. So the day after the ordinance came into effect, we sent out four notice letters requesting write of entry in order to look at grading operations that appeared to be over the threshold. At that point, we talked to all of those individuals and were satisfied that they were putting erosion controls in place. Our interpretation of the ordinance, when it was going to start, the time of enactment was that even if heavy equipment was offsite, but that there were no obvious soil erosion controls in place, that project was still considered to be active. And so those were the letters that we sent out. I've had conversations with two engineers that are called with some detailed questions about how the grading ordinance would come into effect for any particular project that they had going at that point. Talked to several cannabis consultants who had similar questions about when it would apply and when it would not. Simply conversations about clarification, an operator who called with this same intent. I've been receiving complaints, so four, four total additional complaints that have not yet been investigated.
So complaints about.
Complaints about grading.
No, without proper.
Would require, following the procedure here, requesting write of entry to determine whether the thresholds have been reached or not. And again, that would apply whether even the heavy equipment was offsite if there were no obvious sediment control erosion BMPs in place. One of those complaints was through the online system. Four additional complaints have come through staff, or not complaints, but sites have come to our attention from staff or agency individuals. I've done one plan check for whether or not it would apply, the ordinance would apply. I believe that's described at the end of the staff report. And then one conversation over the counter. So we're talking twelve fifteens interactions related to this.
Not a single application.
Not a single application. So it's early in the process. It's, we're rolling it out. To speak to those four notice, notice letters, you know, I, I was not intending to issue violations off of that. I was looking for corroboration that they were going to put sediment controls in place and see photograph the evidence that that was true. So that's a small bit of background. To your question about what we expect, I expect that over the next several months, it will continue on this vein of looking at potential violations and essentially getting the word out to individual contractors, your equipment operators, individuals, landowners, that the ordinance is intact and needs to be reminded.
I do expect there's grading going on in the county. Yes, towards the end of June, the short season.
Understand that this is a complaint for ordinance.
So which pleasure or recognition?
I'd like to see a shorter timeframe, just in, just in general. Try to be responsive as we can, but if we learn that workload is such that it can't be done, we might have to change that.
I think we've gone beyond just interacting with staff because we're going to have to call the camera. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, my mistake. All right, so I think we understand the issue. Let's go on to emergency work.
I am going to point to the top of page three, that struck through paragraph there was also requested the board suggesting that, yes, there aren't all further intentions at this time to develop a grading program, another grading ordinance. Emergency work, they requested some clarification. It was kind of twofold. One supervisor suggested that the, the language was too lenient toward a landowner who could do excessive grading during an emergency. And others may suggest that it needed to be more specific. It was stemming from a conversation that we raised by the commissioners here that individuals with heavy equipment are often called out onto emergencies. They were just requesting some clarification. I'm hopeful that that language, those additions are sufficient to satisfy supervisors, but again, it's the commissioner's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so then staff language clarification included bottom of page three exemptions. Those first three were simplified into just one single bullet point, which is basis of the ordinance itself. If you have a conditional use permit or director use permit, you are exempt from the restriction on mass grading. You are allowed to conduct mass grading with those permits at hand. Additional discussion topics. I had discussions with CAL FIRE about two eight or less conversions. I've received some calls from CAL FIRE, oh, sorry, official wildlife to clarify comments made to the supervisors in one of those meetings, I believe the first one, that you are not exempt from this if you have a three eight or less conversion. In other words, if you are approved by CAL FIRE to convert your land, you still need to apply by the grading ordinance if you are conducting grading beyond what is allowable under that conversion exemption. They have very specific things that they will allow that are under the Californic Forest Practice rules, including landing of a certain size or cutting roads for a certain purpose that are not intended to be permitted or will be decommissioned in some fashion or another, the application of erosion control plans. Very similar ideas to what we're doing, but they, they will allow some cross slope road development and again landings for the purpose of removing the virginable timber. However, if those stumps are being pulled out with a heavy, piece of heavy equipment or roads are being graded more excessively than just the removal of those trees, that is not an allowable practice and the grading ordinance typically, I would assume, would apply. So I just want to clarify that to the commissioners. Also, with one particular plan that was brought to us, that was a remediation. It was a plan to fix a few creeks that had been cited, had been for violations by state agencies. I allowed that to go through without applying the grading ordinance because of specific exemptions that, one, it's an existing road and the details of the plan don't matter, it's an existing road, but also that because they were going through a state agency, they were applying CEQA. They were adopting, the letters have changed now, but exemption F, they were being covered under CEQA by a state agency for that project. And we're considering, I think, whether that is appropriate, that we would allow projects to go forward if another state agency is taking the lead on it. That may or may not be the original idea of this, but it seemed appropriate at the time. Feel free to comment on that. And lastly, culvert replacement, this typically, this wasn't intended to cover culvert replacements. That again would be covered by other agencies, a number of other agencies that would be applying conditions to those projects that I don't foresee that we would, we would be putting the grading restrictions on that type of activity. I do know other things to talk about, but I told I talked too much, so.
Any questions, staff, before we open? All right, I'd like to open this one to any public comment.
Well, commissioners, once again, John Bauer from Johnson City. And I think one of the reasons that the room is so empty tonight is because all of the dirt work professionals are out working on dirt right now, getting bit by mosquitoes because it's the dirt work season and they have to. As a matter of survival. They have a very limited season here. So the timeframe for the county to approve or deny a permit or be automatically granted is really important here. Thirty days, thirty working days is far, far too long on what is realistically about six, seven month work season. The dirt work professionals that I'm familiar with all feel like two weeks, two weeks, fourteen days is a more appropriate timeframe to get these approved or denied. And, you know, the, next to our commercial cannabis industry, I think our local contractors and dirt workers are definitely the largest employers in the county and support the most households. So I encourage a fourteen day, not working day, fourteen calendar day approval or denial period. It will encourage staff to prioritize these, processing of these permits. And hopefully keep our professionals in business. These folks invest a lot of money in their equipment, their training. Most of them are familiar with best management practices. And, you know, in light of the lack of applications, I think it's appropriate to move this thing a little closer to the industry and try to encourage some participation. That's what we really want to see here, is people actually apply for these permits and jump through these hoops and hopefully do more thoughtful dirt work. So, you know, in keeping with that, I think a fourteen day limitation is appropriate. And the additional exemptions and clarifications for, for ag work are appropriate also. I encourage approval of this as written, except for the, the bumping down of the thirty day approval period to twenty-one. So we'd like to see that fourteen days, fourteen working, fourteen calendar days. We really want to see participation, I think it's, that's the priority here. Thank you, that's all for now.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Commissioner Justin Hawkins from Habor. You know, initially I was kind of worried about what this grading ordinance would look like, but I got to say, it's actually probably a pretty good effort for Trinity County. And I think it does address kind of the cultural change that we need to occur in this county. So I think that that's good because it's not overly burdensome, but it begins to capture a lot of the most problematic impacts from grading in this county. I've seen grading go on all spring, honestly. So I know there's grading going on that would qualify for this, so. There is probably a messaging problem because I talk to people all the time and they're like, what? No, Trinity doesn't have a grading ordinance. I, I, you know, I'm just making it up, I think. So I think that it needs to go out in a better message probably. And overall, I think it's good. I do think a reduced timeframe for return of the application is important. And this has nothing to do with staff. I think that they are overwhelmed. I don't think anybody can deny the planning department is completely overwhelmed. We have to have something like this, I think, to be environmentally sensitive in this community. I think we all agree we need a grading ordinance. But the fact is, is that the, the planning staff is, is bare bones. And so I'm, 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 it's a complex emotion because I think that they have not enough time, but we need to give them time to get it through. My problem comes with a lot of the CUPs and stuff is that, that go between them. They'll wait twenty-nine days and then tell you, hey, we need this extra information. You get it to them, clock rolls on, another thirty days. You know what, we are, we need this also. I mean, this goes on with the CUPs. I mean, I don't know how a CUP is take over a year to process through an outside firm. There's a lack of communication and a lack of just efficiency within the system. And I don't think this is going to solve it. I don't have the answer honestly, other than more staff, perhaps more money, a better pay rate for the staff. I, I just don't know, but we need to have it be simple and easily pushed along so we can get these projects through. But giving them thirty days and then letting them take another thirty days and another thirty days for small changes, which was going on in the CUP process, is my understanding, is going to be tough. And we've got all these, the requirements, the IR coming down on cannabis. I just don't know how we make all this work very well. But we need to make sure that things move through fast. And I appreciate your time and it looks like your wisdom in this matter, I appreciate it also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. As someone who had a particularly unprepared board meeting tonight because of her own inability to get a lot of things done at the same time, I would like to say that I know that the planning staff is, has a lot going on. Overwhelmed, as he said, I kind of want to jump on those coattails for a moment. So I think it is appropriate to talk to your staff to see what time they can efficiently and hopefully within that timeframe, get it done. It sounds like it's something that since it, the history has been, there hasn't been one. So getting people to change over is going to be tough and to be able to get projects done quickly. You can do a shorter time, but you want to make sure your, your department has enough time to give you guys the information to make informed decisions. And so I think maybe turning to your staff and saying, you know, I think they've given the recommendations of thirty days. The worst thing I think is to give a, a shorter time period. They can't meet it. That creates additional boiling of the pot, as they say. And I would love to see them be able to have more staff and be able to get a lot of things done because I have seen how hard they work. I'm someone who complains when I don't get what I want, so I can stand up here and say that. But I do know that they are trying as hard as they can. But make sure that they're given the, the tools that they need and the time they need to give you guys informed information so you can make informed decisions. Just a thought, thanks. Thanks.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Commissioner Tom Belanco of Douglas City. I generally like the grading ordinance. I think staff's done a good job of this third time we're looking at it. I think the timing with which it goes back to get revised is pretty impressive considering everything else going on. I think it's been fairly responsive to both the commission and the board when things have needed to be changed. In terms of the exemption for projects that might be covered by other agencies, I would suggest maybe limiting that to those agencies to Cal Fire and Fish and Wildlife. Because if either of those two are the lead agency on a project like a three acre conversion or an LSA, you get somebody in the badge, will come out, stand there and look at it. Then they will look at it again when you're done. A SWIP doesn't necessarily guarantee you're going to get a visit from somebody from the water board. There are sanctions go on within everything, I understand that. But I think, you know, most of our grading is going to have either Cal Fire or Fish and Wildlife involved anyway. So I think those two agencies have demonstrated pretty good responsible responsibility out here. So if we are going to say, hey, if you're covered by another agency, I would not just say any agency, but I would leave it really to those two. Otherwise, you know, I do think a reasonable timeframe is appropriate because we do have such a short season and everybody knows that, you know, it's a lot of stuff you've got to bring to bear, people, fuel, equipment, when you're doing some grading like this. So, and they're being pulled in every direction. So just for planning with a small P out there amongst the people, having some kind of timeframe, I think, is important. But otherwise, I think it's a good job. I think staff's done a good job with it and I would go ahead and say it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric, unless you want to talk, that's everybody in the room.
Trying not to, but.
All right.
Now we tend to come talk. Gerald Ford from Weaverville. The only comment I have is that I spent quite a good time with the planning department and everybody agrees they're overworked and all that sort of thing. But I think there's several other functions out there that have timelines on them as well. And so maybe they all ought to match up so that somebody doesn't have to worry about this ordinance is thirty days and this one's twenty-one and this one over here is fourteen and that kind of thing. So maybe it would be a good idea for those to be aligned somehow. And I don't know what that means because I don't know all of them. I know that some of the ones I deal with with certificate compliance, mergers, lot lines and that sort of thing have some of those kinds of requirements now. But I think probably from the standpoint of staff trying to figure out what they're going to do on a particular project, it'd be good. They know typically we have twenty-one days or typically we have thirty days or whatever it is. So they don't have to worry about looking up each individual you want to find out if they're passing timelines on.
Okay, thank you. Guess we'll close public comment. Okay. Walk back through again. Did anybody have any more thoughts on the agricultural, rural grading exemption language on page two, section one point four, Director Kim? Anything come to mind after that commentary?
Makes sense.
How about the time limits? That's the topic of the day. Well, first of all, how about striking that strike pair paragraph? Any thoughts on that? It's pretty simple. The board doesn't want it because they're not sure it'll be in the order of ordinance.
And that was part of the justification for the moratorium originally. And we have Director Tippett tell us that it was going to be such a complicated process to develop a grading ordinance that it was going to take a long time, but we need to do this now. I'm a little bit confused, I guess, about what the ultimate direction is.
That's right. He did, I remember that.
Yeah, you made a big point.
Exactly, that we need to get this done and that there would be a further, more detailed ordinance later.
But it was going to take a long time.
Yeah.
But short of a urgency ordinance where statutes cover the time limits, probably not, this doesn't really commit anything and I think we just don't, it's a perpless landmark. That's been my understanding. How about the twenty-one versus thirty versus some other number?
I kind of, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'm kind of confused on the conditional permit and director's permit. Like, is this something, any of this going to come before the commission? As a conditionally used permit? I mean, is there a need for that? I mean, I just, and then if there is a need, what is the threshold that specifies what is a director's use permit and what would come before the commission? And then furthermore, it's a conditional, twenty-one, thirty days? I mean, that's, it's not going to cut it off.
I think the conditionally used permit and the director's use permit are for other, if you already, if you're getting a conditionally used permit, say for your cultivation site, then the grading part would be already have been looked at by staff. So then you wouldn't need to get a grading permit.
You'd need to follow this process.
You would just.
Just start escalating the way.
That's a fine point. It'd be a pretty unusual situation, I think, where a conditional use permit would be required specifically for grading. It would be typical that another exemption would apply. Some other agency, utility work, I would, I would have to think of how hard, how that would come into play. But the idea of a director's use permit, we built in the conditional and director's use because of the scale of the potential project. If it's particularly large, then it's likely going to have more significant environmental impacts where a conditional use permit would be, would make sense. So we did want to include that. I would think more mostly director's use permits would.
It's pretty hard to meet the timeline though. I mean, the director can always case this director's use permit to the commission because he doesn't want to make that particular decision. So that can happen. If that turns it into a conditionally used permit, that's great. That's not going to happen in twenty-one days. You're not going to get it noticed that on our agenda and all that twenty-one days. So I don't see if it is a CUP, how do we get meet the ordinance time? A twenty-one day period, I don't even know, you can make a thirty day period.
That's a fine question. Yes, again, I would think generally if you're getting a conditionally used permit, you're going through another process and you would not be applying for it. If however, you did, then you could apply for it later on. So you're going through the condition of produce permit and then you would deal with any particular grading issue down the line that's closer to that application deadline. I'm not sure exactly how to deal with it.
I'm not sure how that would work. I don't, I can't even envision a situation where we'd come up, but I'm not sure it hurts to have it in here, except that it ties our hands. We'll never make the twenty-one day and that would be an automatic approval.
Not over a conditional use permit?
Over a conditional use permit.
Or a grading, a grading.
But grading, no. Does that make sense of a grading DUP or CUP permit application? What is a grading CUP permit application?
I would say that the easiest way to clean that up would be to get rid of the CUP and DUP and just be a grading permit application because a CUP is, you're not going to need a grading permit if you're getting a CUP.
I have a point of condition. Point of condition. Can I put that in the condition of the CUP?
That you get.
That you can grade. The grading gets addressed on our DUP and all the other.
Yeah, well, grading would be addressed in any CUP because the.
Because they're doing something else.
Yeah, and we already address grading in our CUPs without a grading ordinance of any kind. There's erosion control measures and all that in all your CUPs. So I'm.
Well, I think that's exemption in the bottom of page three. A project that creates a volume over the thresholds that obtains a CUP or DUP is exempt. Yeah. Project, because that permit process will cover the grading. So which brings us back to the time limit. Does this, if we delete the reference to DUPs and CUPs and just reference grading permits, does that consistently, the way the process does flow?
We wanted to house it in an existing permit process and so we chose a director's use permit process.
Right, but can we just eliminate CUP because you don't want to have CUP here because there's no way you can get CUP that within twenty-one days.
Chair, can you please open up public comment again? I have something to add.
Just add.
So the supervisor, both yourselves and the supervisors, never granted authority for director's use or conditional use permits regarding this. This is a ministerial permit. So I think we're talking about a ministerial permit and some confusion about if a grading permit through ministerial means gets a, can have an exemption if it's part of a director's use or conditional use permit project.
Okay, that makes.
But this is a ministerial permit as currently approved.
That makes me want to just delete DUP or CUP references in there because you've already said if you go for DUP or CUP, you're exempt because those processes will cover grading requirements. And this would be if it's a ministerial or any other kind of action, you have to get grading permit and then the timing of what is.
So how, I'm sorry, how would exemption A be then? You're going to strike conditionally used or.
No, exemption A would be the same.
It's the reference to twenty-one days, we'd drop the reference to DUP or CUP.
I see, okay, good. That's.
Section one dot four is where, one dot five is where we drop that and we leave the exemption.
And then after all that, we still only came up with a number of days.
We still have to decide a number of days, but at least we get. The CUP was jumping out, I think that's impossible. Then that makes a question.
So would, maybe you could, David, maybe you could expand a little bit. When you said that you wanted to do it within a framework, an existing permit process, that's what you showed, that's DUP and CUP. But.
So the planning department has, okay, the intent of the process is that an applicant would drop off a standard DUP application at the planning department that would include project description, location, map, neighbors, all that stuff, which is a standard project permit with a standard fee schedule. So we wanted to fold it into that because it's an established process. At that point, that application would be delivered to the Department of Transportation for review because that's principally where the engineers are housed, in the operations division. And approval for, or recommendation for approval of the permit would happen in that house and then go back to the planning department. So there's meant to be some give and take, but it was through a standard route that follows subdivision map revisions or lot line adjustments or other types of permits that require routing through other departments. That was our intent. So rather than creating a new ministerial permit process, we wish to use the director's use permit process.
So where did the CUP come in to that?
That was.
Was that just, was there a threshold that you?
That was part of a discretionary threshold where the director would apply a requirement for a CUP if a project was large enough and potential environmental impacts were large enough that it was warranted.
In some sense, though, it's not a use permit as contemplated by zoning ordinance, right? It's not a use in that sense, subject to zoning, you know? It's a grading ordinance. It's like a building permit, more like a building permit, which has a ministerial process, right? Gets routed. So I don't think we should tie it here to a DUP permit. I think it is a grading permit and you figure out what that is. And if you, if you really need the ordinance to say it's a ministerial or it's something else, then they can fix that at the board when they, when council looks at this and says, we would like the board to say it's that kind of permit. But if it's, because a zoning use permit doesn't seem to be what it is. It's not a director's use permit in that sense. All the other ones that we've seen that come by or where director's use permits being issues is what you can do in, you know, the use of the property, not, not the alteration like a building permit. That's how I think of it at this moment. Does that make sense to you?
If I don't want to force something, you think it's just wrong.
I can review the video too if I get confused.
Well, the other way you could fix it besides removing DUP or CUP would be simply to, to add a phrase after, request for, remove the or, but request more information or refer to the planning commission.
Which still, then you're not going to qualify on that twenty-one days.
No, I know, but they will have, they will have, they will have taken an action within twenty-one days. And that's all that they're required to do is take an action.
I really don't think that reviewing grading is, falls under the purview of the planning commission. I'm not, I don't think I'm qualified. Sorry.
Unless it triggers a CEQA, unless it's a really big deal.
Yeah, exactly.
Then you are into a bigger permit plan. But if this is like you're cutting a roadway and you have a director to sign off on it because it got routed and you approved it.
But they just.
Not a use permit, no.
They just got done saying that it would be, the only ones that would be referred to the planning commission would be those that went over what they felt the reasonable threshold was for CEQA. And if they, if they need to have that ability to move it up a step, then they should have it.
Well, the point is there just aren't going to be any projects that are just grading projects.
No, and I.
They're always going to have some other development or some other use.
Yeah, that's probably true.
I mean, the grading is just a means to an add, right?
Yeah. Well, I would like to hear if staff has any thoughts.
Sure. So the idea, once again, with the director's use permit, part of what we found with cannabis is that when a new license or permit type comes in the door, if we don't have a structure for handling it right from the beginning, then it's very difficult to deal with that process once it's in motion and change the process. So the director's use permit, we have a routing process already in place for that. We have a fee structure for it. It seemed like we were anticipating that grading permits would be similar, would require a similar, similar level of effort for us to evaluate as a director's use permit, with the exception of county engineer or other engineering staff down at DOT reviewing them with a little more, a little more effort than your standard director's use permit. You know, your standard director's use permit is like an RV parked on the site for a year while somebody's building their home.
The thing is, the director's use permit's the discretionary decision, right? A grading permit is if I meet the requirements, I get to grade.
Yes.
Right? That's a ministerial, that is a ministerial.
So I understand your point earlier. I'm just letting you know why we chose that structure.
I think you can, it seems to me you could follow the director's use permit process, but it's not a discretionary thing. It just gets the routing done. And the other day, a director signs it and says, yeah, the work document is properly done or it needs to. But that, unless you just think that's going wrong, that's not the way.
No, I understand your point and I think it's something that you go to the board and they should make a decision then if it's a new permit type, decide on a fee, the appropriate fee as well.
That's definitely something they should do.
And that was not a thing, you tried to choose something that was already built.
Do neighbors get noticed?
Yes.
Under your.
Director's use permit, they do, yes.
And, but they don't on a building permit.
Correct.
Now, so let's back up. The intent of this ordinance is to capture the environmental problems and head them off, okay? They're headed. In that sense, it's a building permit. You've got to build to code. Your plans have to be plan checked and you have to build to code because you have to grade to code. You have to meet all the requirements of it. But it almost isn't a neighbor thing. This isn't a discretionary thing where if it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, we should do it. It's like it can't pollute the stream, it can't move so much, you know? That's why if you put the DUP term in there, it makes it sound like it's a discretion and, you know, neighborhood will be factored in and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but if.
I think grading has the potential to create all sorts of issues.
Yes, I was just, I was just going to say that.
But that doesn't mean.
But that, so does a big building, but that doesn't mean.
Yeah, but if they take off the top of a. But if they take off the top of a, of the hill, like you're looking at, it's still.
Then you want them to not do that by the hill. That one was made very clearly in a past life, so.
It affects your neighbors.
Of course it affects it, that's not the point. The point is, is it discretionary thing like that and I'm not against noticing neighbors. I'm just saying that it affects the way we think about how these permits are issued. That's the news, the noise. We're beating this to death.
Well, no, but that's one of the things that takes time is if you're going to get feedback from your neighbor and you have to mail out notices, you can't possibly do it in 14 days, you probably can't even do it in 21.
I'm sure you can't.
So, I mean, at least if you expect them to get a notice and have more than a day to get back to you or something like that, so.
I think if we start requiring neighbor feedback for every grading project in Parity County, we will never move there again.
No one moves on.
Not legally.
You just won't have any participation.
Because it, it is the same thing like, it's like a building permit. There has to be guidelines and that be followed. You can't have, everybody have their say and then decide differently on every project. It would, it would never work.
I don't like the color paint my neighbor painted.
So we definitely need to remove anything with a use permit.
Yes, that's where I, I led you to.
And then we have to get back to the number of days.
So if it's a ministerial permit, right?
What, what would be the normal routing process timeframe on a building permit? That would have to go in more than one county department, is it any different?
Well, the building permit depends on the consistency of the project, for one thing. You know, generally speaking, the permit goes in, gets routed to all other departments.
I mean, I've submitted building permits and I've got a call that they were here ready within five days.
Right, and again, it depends on the, the quality of the material that comes in.
I'm sorry.
Depends on the quality of the material that comes in, that you routed to other departments and there is going to be one plan check day that is dedicated, the zoning official pretty much dedicates one day for each of your plans. How this process works within DOT, we're anticipating that their workload can handle it, but during that time, I would think. All departments.
Go for 14 then.
Yeah.
Poorest county in the state, we need to encourage economic development.
It makes 21 down, which is a little bit.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, 21 should be fine.
I tried.
Do we have consensus on 21 days and striking DUP and CUP references in that paragraph? Do we have consensus?
Now, is this 21 calendar?
Calendar days, yeah. And we could add that word, yes.
Calendar days, David.
Striking DUP and CUP in that specific paragraph.
Yes.
It's grading permit.
There are other locations, by the way, where director's use permit is included, including that emergency work section.
Well, let's move on to emergency work. So perhaps that should say grading permit.
Any director's use replace with grading?
Um, but any with that. And you might start capitalizing. Okay, the rest of the director references in that paragraph are to be convinced that it is in fact an emergency and that's appropriate. But the reference to the director's use permit should be graded under section 1.9.
Understood.
Okay. Concurrent on that? Yes. Then exemptions, staff rewrote exemptions to consolidate all of that at the bottom of page three in order to italicize the paragraph. Then the additional discussion topics, there was a comment from the audience about limiting the state agencies to those two, CalFire, Fish and Wildlife, I kind of like that idea personally.
I did like that idea.
I don't really like that.
I think that sends a bad message to myself.
How so?
I mean, if you were an employee of another agency, you would feel discriminated against.
Okay.
If I could speak to that, please. 401 permits, it's not just stormwater pollution prevention plans that was mentioned that would apply under the water board, but also 401 permits and potentially 4 or 4 permits with the Army Corps of Engineers. And the intention of the comment was that CalFire exemptions, conversion exemptions would not, would be exempt. And I do not agree with that. I still think that it was true. As long as, I'm just trying to make that clear. CalFire really would not have a lot to say about grading operations unless there was an exemption in place. So calling them out specifically could potentially muddy the water of the role of CalFire and whether or not reactor conversions are an exemption or not.
CalFire would also be involved if you had a THP on the property, which would lead to grading that would be over the threshold.
Very true, yes, and those are specifically exempt, they were called out specifically as to our permit, correct?
Was there anything else on the additional discussion topics that you wanted to discuss?
We didn't reach out.
Was there any action you would?
I, I actually would like clarification on the three acre conversion discussion where you specifically said digging stumps. In some cases, that might be a part of the three acre conversion and then would it be exempt? Or are you, are you only talking about stuff that occurs after the three acre conversion's done?
Anything that CalFire would allow under the conversion exemption should be allowed. It is, would be abiding by the California Forest Practice rules and it's a written exemption under SEQA. It's a conversion of less than three acres, that should all be okay. If stumps are part of that as determined by CalFire staff, such as you're digging a landing or, or skidding road or whatever it might be, then that is appropriate. What I'm trying to avoid is the idea of going through for whatever bona fide intent was stated for the conversion and expanding that to something that doesn't meet that intent, such as doing a field break, removing merchantable timber and then removing all of the stumps with heavy equipment. That is not necessary for a field break. So the intent doesn't meet up with what CalFire understood in their paperwork. The intent becomes something different and I believe the grading ordinance should apply in that situation. If CalFire determines that that exemption or that conversion is for another purpose and we look at that project and we concur, then I think the grading ordinance should apply. If a homeowner has any confusion about what they're doing, then they should be contacting CalFire or they should be contacting us to verify before their activity, whether or not this ordinance will apply.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, no, because one of the exemptions you can get for three acre conversion is to convert from forest to agriculture, which requires taking all the stumps.
Yes, that would be a bona fide intent unless it contradicts the planning department policy if the agricultural practice is for cannabis specifically. You could do another agricultural purpose, yes, but if it's specifically cannabis, there are procedures in place in the planning department.
So it's a cannabis.
So is there any discussion about the discussion topic? Further discussion, thank you.
I did want to add to that if I could, something that I just came up today, honestly, was the idea, and this is for an interpretation from the commission or recommendation for how this should be applied. If an individual is depositing spoils from offsite onto their property, non-native material onto a location, that would be greater than the thresholds here described here. My intent is that that is a grading practice, is the deposition of spoils. If it's outside of a mining operation or any other exemption, am I correct?
You mean if the signs say fill dirt wanted and they start piling up and it's more than two feet above existing grade?
Yeah, it'll only be an agricultural exemption if it was greater than 800 cubic yards or more than 10,000 square feet. Then I interpret that as a grading activity, even if the material, if the material specifically came from offsite. If you look toward the definitions of grading, then that, and whereas two and whereas three. And also.
Grading and filling a combination of the two.
It does say whereas grading is defined as filling. Does that answer the question?
I, I didn't, I didn't want to get into a gray area here, so I'm preemptively asking for your interpretation of it. If you look under section 2A, also the restrictions of how this ordinance applies, it is, effect contains, evolves, consists of a volume of graded material greater than 800 cubic yards, whether contiguous or non-contiguous. I did not say spoils specifically.
Well, the other thing I would note now that you said it is that the whereas defines grading, but the ordinance doesn't. Ordinance 326, which starts right above section one, below that, the definition grading doesn't appear.
There is not a definition section in the ordinance, that's correct. It was written as the whereas is provided the definition.
I guess that's the legislative intent section, counselor, is that word?
No, usually there would be a separate definition section.
Yeah.
And that's where you can clarify that without being a complication.
Looks like we have more changes to do.
See, I told you I'd talk too much.
What do you think about that?
Let me see, is that in the?
It's a specificity.
I would agree, you should have definition section to clarify any and all terms used in here with specifically to eliminate those gray areas.
But to answer your specific question regarding filled rather than from offsite, if you're using the whereas's as your definition, then that qualifies as grading in my opinion.
Thank you.
It would be better to have that defined so it's in everyone's opinion, though.
May I include that in the whereas section?
I would, I would recommend adding a definition section.
So, Richard? Okay, I think in our motion, we can recommend that you create a definition section. And do we agree with the interpretation that was, Mr. Stewart, that his example of the big fill pile from offsite is grading?
Absolutely.
Okay, I agree with that. And we concur that that's not gray, that is black and white.
Yes.
And that we recommend that you add a, next time board takes a run at this, then put a definition section in there. And if they really need us to do that, set it back, does, instead of doing it tonight.
So did we basically not take any action on the additional discussion topics?
I was asking, are there, is there any further discussion, is there any action to be taken? If we do nothing, we haven't really changed.
I mean, it's basically staff discretion about whether they're going to, someone else is giving a permit through one of these other agencies when they choose to say a permit's required, right?
Well, the discussion doesn't recommend that such language be added to the ordinance. Are you recommending that such language should codify that?
No.
I'm okay with the practice. I don't, yeah.
My luck.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else want to discuss the discussion?
I, I do have one point I want to wrap under exemptions, page eight on our staff report, under the new letter J. I just want some clarification here. It says access roads and building paths consistent with conditions of approval for subdivision or parcel map approved by public works department, planning department, department of transportation. Where does, like, for example, residential projects fall under that? My concern, and I've, I've heard from someone that they wanted to do a certain amount of grading, but there was some gray area because the residential area was going to be included in that grading, so therefore they would break the 20,000 square foot threshold with the grading they had proposed or envisioned plus the current permit they have for their residential site. You know, so, so they fell into that gray area. So, so how, how does that get treated? I mean, could, could the residential site be excluded and can that be specified or?
Or would that fall under the building permit or?
To clarify, it's a residential parcel.
Yes.
One.
I don't want to know all the details personally.
And that's fair to say it here, but my question is, was it a subdivision map or parcel map revision? Because that, that's a standard process that Leslie had mentioned that he would go to engineers in the DOT that would review all of the grading operation plans for roads, pads, everything else and would go to director of health for the same thing. That's a standard process and that's, those plans are checked, so that's why I wanted to exclude it here. If you are talking about a, someone who wishes to grade on their parcel and it is zone residential, whatever type, this ordinance would still apply if they met the thresholds.
And including their building pad, which, for which they already have a building permit?
So this, part of the function of this ordinance, oh, let me back up one moment, is that if they have an existing road that they're grading, that is exempt as well. But if they're building, developing a building pad, this ordinance is filling in a gap where people have gone to a parcel and graded out a housing pad of whatever size they're able to do and then they've applied for the building permit. And the building permit itself doesn't specifically say that that pad has to be constructed to any particular standard. The foundations do and everything related to that building itself does, but the pad itself and the conditions that it was graded under are not addressed. And so this is meant to fill in that gap where people would clear lands and then get a building permit.
I see, I see.
That, that's been a very common practice.
Okay. Any other topics at all? Okay, who wants to make a motion? Please.
Okay, I move that we accept the.
Recommend.
That we recommend to the board of supervisors that we approve the suggested language changes to the restrictions on grading ordinance number 1347 with the change of 21 calendar, adding calendar under 21 to make it 21 calendar days, remove DUP or CUP and make it a grading permit application under the time limits on the ordinance. Under emergency work, change director's use permit every place it is used to grading permit. And I think that's it, is that it?
You got the agriculture language and the exemption language, right?
Oh, yes, and.
The motion was to accept all of their changes with the changes you just.
With the changes that I just said, yes.
I think you got it right.
Okay. And, and add a, add a list of definitions to the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are you clear with the motion?
Yes.
You're going to give a couple of words, you got it? The tapes got it, Derek's got it.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's, it's nice to think. YouTube rewind, YouTube rewind.
Any further discussions? Let's see, is this a roll call?
Let's do a roll call. So just name each.
Is there a particular?
Do me last, otherwise it's your turn.
Do me last, otherwise it's your turn.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Fantastic, you knew, it's a good job, commissioners, fellas. Interesting that it might have been, and good job, David.
Yes.
Good job, appreciate that, and let's do that. Okay, that brings us to matters from the commission.
I do have one thing. I was very concerned at the EIR, the EIR meeting, about the fact that it was advertised as a presentation discussion and informational Q and A. And it was also said the word dialogue was used by Director Tippett at the very beginning. When the gentleman from Ascend answered for the first hour virtually every question with the phrase, "Well, you need to put that in writing," or the phrase that, "Well, the definition," or all the mitigations were based on the program, and did not answer any specific questions, that's not a dialogue. It's not a conversation, it's not a question and answer. The first time anybody got a really straight answer was when David said that, "Well, the program is the five hundred and thirty." And while I applaud you for saying that, I have some issues with that statement, but I thank you for that. After that, shortly after that, I had to leave, and I hope that it got better, I have a feeling it didn't, but I think everybody there came away very frustrated with the fact that it was not a dialogue, it was not a discussion. Even questions as to the structure of the EIR were not answered. And as far as I'm concerned, it's not acceptable. Sorry.
That's okay. Anybody else?
And I know it's your fault.
I always raise my concern that the same issue with the draft EIR meeting in District Five, I brought up a stuff before the meeting that the notices didn't arrive in the mail till the twenty-fourth, when the meeting was on the twenty-second. That was my biggest issue with the EIR meeting in matter.
I probably will not be able to attend the meeting on July eleventh. Is that the next meeting? Yes. This is FYI.
Richard?
Nothing.
I will be out of town on August eighth and probably August twenty-second, so I'm not sure about the second one yet. Definitely, I'll be out on the eighth of August.
I almost certainly will be out of town on August twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
So I've heard rumors that the EIR is headed in here possibly as early as August. Is that, were you planning regular meetings, or I've also heard it could take two or three nights. Is that consecutive meetings, or is that you plan on three nights in a row?
Yeah, I was going to skip to that under matters, you said, but I can.
Why don't you go ahead, we're at matters for staff.
Okay. Regarding timeline for what we see, the big things that we see coming, we've come up with a tentative timeline for the planning commission meetings to hear the draft EIR and the ordinance. Tentatively, we were looking at two days, August twenty-first and twenty-second. If it looks like you're all not going to be here, then we will work with that timeline. We were trying to verify whether or not we would have, we're thinking we're going to use a different venue than here, we think that it's going to be necessary to go Trinity Ops performing our send. If that timing doesn't work around, and you know you're not going to be here, then we will work with the timeline because we felt, I think it's important that you're all here.
Would that be the soonest it could happen? Or, because earlier in August, I couldn't be around.
You know, I'll have to look, we chose those dates for a reason, but I'll look to see if we have any flexibility to go sooner. Later, yes, you could, but.
I won't be here on the eighth. There's a chance I won't be here on the twenty-second as well.
These will be evening?
Do you have a strong preference? We need, we know we're going to have long meetings, we could either go earlier in the evening, begin around five P M., maybe four P M., there's some flexibility there, I wanted to get some guidance from you regarding the timing, was just trying to get the dates nailed down.
Well, gentlemen, I would personally be flexible on a four versus six or seven or five or something like that, but the question that raises in my mind is the public's act, you know? Are they available to get out work income?
As well as commissioners that have jobs.
As well as commissioners with their job.
So five P M. would be more realistic, and then you just kind of freeze yourself early, early long evening?
Yeah, screw breaking pizza, right?
Okay. You'll get some correspondence from me via email or phone to verify this, it's in the next, probably tomorrow.
Do we all have copies of that, EIR?
Okay.
Thank you for that.
We have hard copies of that.
What are the comments due?
Twelve.
Twelve. And do you expect to get?
You know, some of them.
We'll be reviewing the full document and completing the response to comments, right? So it's going to be a lot of effort having that here.
I'd be impressed if it fits into two days.
Well, and if that's something that you anticipate, we can do a third, reserve a third day kind of as a placeholder, that's what we're doing for the board meeting.
I believe we will need.
It's going to be a very popular subject and well-attended, I would guess, and lots of commentary, which is all good.
Back to the calendar then.
Have you given any thought to how those days would be structured?
Yes.
So would it be on specific topics for a given evening, or just?
No, of course we'll start with the seven P M. and.
Two days.
Hold on for that. We will let you know that there is a structure, yes. Now, if we're going to do a third day into it, that might change a little bit. So do you want to speak to that at all?
None at this point, no. Recommendations would be great, but I expect that Ascend will be here, Pat Angel from Ascend, who is the principal author, I expect he will be here to present.
Anything more regarding that? Okay, so I would like to give you a little bit of an overview regarding what we have going in the planning department right now and with cannabis. In cannabis, we have around forty variances. The compliance team has been trying to talk people out of variances. Of course, that indicates that something's going on, but you know, it's not normal to have that many variances, so we're working on that for right now, it is what it is, and when we revisit the ordinance, maybe that's going to be the soonest time that we can really address it fully.
I do have a question. You mentioned the EIR and the ordinance, what is that ordinance that you're talking about?
What we are doing is proposing the EIR for the county's cannabis program, and then at the same, on the heels of that, combining all the different cannabis ordinances into one ordinance.
Okay, good, that's a great idea.
So licensing or continuing on in cannabis, continuing on, of course, with our licensing, we're in the low three hundreds right now, making sure that all renewals, we're trying to get our renewals process as early as we can, because we're anticipating that once we gain a little bit more momentum with the EIR and also combining the ordinance along with some revisions, we're thinking that we're not going to have, you know, staff is going to be very busy taking care of that. So we're working on messaging, like I said, to get the renewals in, get them taken care of. Inspections are continuing out in the field. We have, we have been asked to come up with a report regarding, or an assessment regarding variances, so that was asked during the last meeting. At this point, I am assuming that we would cover it in our new approach to the ordinance. It seems to make sense at that time. That looks like it's going to be, as I said, it was going to be scheduled around the third week of August. Is that okay with you? I don't think anybody would gain anything from reading that.
You mean postponing, agendizing anything about those kinds of changes to the ordinance until we actually do the ordinance after the EIR? That doesn't make sense to me. The ordinance itself, is that part of the two or three day thing?
Yes.
Oh, so.
Certifying the EIR and then looking at the ordinance.
Okay. You really better do three days.
Yeah. I don't think three days is something.
I love your optimism.
Yeah.
We do a whole week.
Okay, so in the planning department, you know, we're kind of running side by side, cannabis is definitely still taking over everything, you know, I encourage all of you at any time, come into the planning department, you know, between eight and two, sometimes you come in and it's like the floor of Wall Street. It is hotbed, it is a very, very busy place. I appreciate that some members of the audience have said staff is overwhelmed. Yes. Okay, I get a hundred and fifty emails a day, standard. It's not doable. I am letting you know it's not sustainable. Staff is doing, I think, you know, we're covering bases as well as we can. We coordinate, you know, I, standard thing, we coordinate with other departments, other agencies, we have a lot of meetings that are mandatory, you know, could we cut some of that out to try to produce better work products? I want to give you good work products. I guess we could try to do some of that, and then we lose the benefit of the course of the clear communication with other departments or agencies, so I've been hesitant to do that. I try to have personal meetings with people that are either in the process with a planning project or that have a license pending, because that communication seems to be very valuable. So if you have a different view on how you think staff could invest time to be more productive or you're completely game for that, but my concern is that right now, it is very, very hard to get something done start to finish without the process changing somewhere along the way, you know, there were comments made about CUPs taking a long time to process. I do keep a communication log for all the CUPs, just so I can go back and verify that, hey, I don't want anything to sit with me or with any of our staff members. Sometimes these things just take a long time, by the time people get their studies in, it's six months in, longer than they thought it would be. So we do use SHN as a consultant. We try to use them just specifically for project work, so they're not doing any of the adminis, we want them to be billable, basically. If somebody comes in and it's a project and we can build to that project, that is what we want them, how we want to use them. It is in a contract that they can function as an extension of planning staff, so you know, administratively, we could plug them in, we're going to start using them for variances. So far, we haven't used them for variances, we've been concentrating more on conditional use permits, whether they're for cannabis or other projects, we've been using them more for conditional use permits, because they can write the secret documents, and the secret documents take a long time, and staff just does not have the time or the ability to do it. And we're working on a fee study for cannabis, there's still the noise assessment that we are supposed to come back to, to you with, or to the board, I'm sorry, with a, no, it is to you.
It's to us.
It's to you, with Mountain Community Healthcare District's clinic expansion. We have the general, general candidate RFP that we've started on, housing element reports, we have a number of larger projects that are in the hawker right now, and trying to turn most of those over to SHN so they can do that project for ready, ready for example, that's a good example of the larger projects. They recently had an outreach event here in town, they're thinking of doing a healthcare campus down in the Trinity Ops Business Park. So that's an example of the other types of projects that we have. And there's a large affordable housing project that we're talking about, it's taking some time to deal with that right now. We have a standard suite of staff reports, mandatory training, sexual harassment training, that kind of thing, so you know, it's constantly busy, and the effort is not at all to disregard the discontent that the public feels toward the planning department right now, because they're frustrated. I feel like if we're really, honestly, I feel like it's a disservice to the public in many ways that it takes so long to turn things around. Given the staff numbers that we have right now, it's pretty much unavoidable, it's unavoidable. All we can do is try to look at July eighth is a nice new date where we get a new planning slash building director, she'll be walking in the door. Rick Tippett is going to be phasing out of cannabis after we get through this EIR process, but it didn't really seem like a fair thing to put this new planning director in a position of being in the middle of a process. So Rick will be in place as the director of planning through that process, and then still, our new planning director will be overseeing the planning projects. So we hope that the planning projects that have been stalled out for a while, certificates of compliance, parcel maps, other projects that are very distant from cannabis, because cannabis has been taking over everything, we're hoping to regain momentum with those things.
Can I ask a question? And I understand everything that you're dealing with, I truly do, but I'm just, was the not noticing the zoning change just an oversight?
Yes, I'm sure it was.
There wasn't any plan to separate it from anything, because it really can't be. That's key part of everything. I'm answering my own question, sorry.
And I think that that's part of, you know, one of the byproducts of, you know, it was literally, this staff report was literally going out the door as I was, as I was walking out the door to one of the five public meetings for the EIR. And, you know, I certainly don't want to be in crisis management mode, because this is the type of product that it results, and it is kind of choosing which fire to put out. We hope to have that changed, like I said, with having a new director in the building. You know, Rick has done his best from a distance, he just has many hats, and he's working on some very, very large projects right now, like the jail. We're hoping that that will separate things a little bit more. We have eight people on staff for cannabis right now, everybody has now had their job for about six months at least, so they know what they're doing, there is a learning curve for sure, and they're settling in pretty well. I don't want to be the gatekeeper, and so we have switched over to a case management model with our cannabis cultivation licensees, so if somebody is assigned one of the code compliance specialists, if any issues come up regarding their site, that's their person that they speak with, so that I'm not the funnel. And then any one person is not in that position.
How many planning staff are not in cannabis? Like staff that work on such, are there any?
One group. One group. Although, you know, once a project is routed as a planning project, like the CUPs, those are planning projects. Even though it's a cannabis use permit, it's not, it's a process that has been established with planning. So it is handled, she's the only one, we really try to keep her out of cannabis because we've found just the nature of it is once you start to get involved, it's really difficult not to recognize how many things need to be done, and that starts taking that time. Bella is hired through planning, but, you know, she's really, a lot of her time is spent on cannabis.
Okay, well, thank you for that briefing, that's...
And I don't feel like it's all...
Interesting job that the new guy, new lady is stepping into, the new director stepping into.
And I don't feel like it's all in the loop. Yeah, I think...
We lobby with our respective supervisors to get you help, but I don't know whether that... Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you want to share? Any other comments or reactions? Well done with that rosy picture, I think we're adjourned.